Prepared to begin recording?
Um, yes, Dolores will quick report.
Okay. All right, then we shall go ahead and get started here momentarily. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and use my video here just temporarily so that I can welcome everyone. Page proceedings. Uh, my name is Mel Penns. I'm the Chair of the City of Des Moines Zoning Board of Adjustment. So we'll go ahead and start the hearing officially here with the gavel. Okay. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines Zoning Board of Adjustment. This board has the power under Iowa law and the zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines. You're in make decisions on requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, to consider conditional use permit requests and to review appeals from any decision of city staff in the administration of the zoning ordinance. The members of this board are citizens of the City of Des Moines. They've been appointed to this board by the city council. The board members are volunteers and receive no compensation for their public service. I'm now gonna take a moment, I'll introduce our board members. There are seven members of the zoning board of adjustment. They are Justin Gross, Dave Gare, Lynn Carlson, Marla Jones, Cindy Smith. Our Vice Chair is Nathan Blake. And again, I'm Mel Penns, the Board Chair. I'm gonna also introduce some city staff who will be assisting us today. The legal counsel from the City of Des Moines for the zoning board is Judy Parks Cruz. Kay Smelick is the city clerk. Michael Ludwig is the planning administrator. Bert Droste is the city planner, a city planner. Uh, Sue Ann Donovan is the city's zoning enforcement officer. Tyler Hall is our meeting moderator. Dolores Brezino is also meeting moderator. Eric Lundey is the city planner. And Catherine Dostard, also city planner. I'm gonna take a minute here and go over our meeting procedure. First and foremost, while this is an open public meeting, uh, this is a legal hearing. These proceedings are being recorded and will be available on the city's website for review later. The board members have each received a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendation. The board is required to base its decision in each case only upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case has been identified in the written staff report. If the fact, as determined by this board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief has been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the requested relief. Each item will be announced in the order as it appears on the agenda. Items one through three are listed on the consent portion of the agenda. These items are not planned to be individually discussed. They will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless the appellant does not agree to the conditions recommended by staff or if there's an individual or a board member that requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda so that a full discussion on the matter can occur. And I will come back to this consent agenda momentarily, so hold that thought for just a bit. Um, as the remaining agenda items are announced, staff will give an overview of the appeal and they will present any written comments received prior to the hearing. Then the appellant or their representative will be allowed up to 10 minutes to present their appeal. We will then move to the public comment portion of the hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in support of, in opposition to, or even in neutrality of an appeal will be allowed up to five minutes each for their comments. This will be their one and only opportunity to address the board. And we will take comments in order, comments for support first, then opposition, and if anybody has any general comments or comments in neutrality. If you wish to speak on the item at hand, if you're within the Zoom app, please click the raise hand icon on the participants panel. If you're, uh, catching up with us by telephone, you can press star nine. The meeting moderator will then monitor both Zoom and phone connections and will then know to call on you. When it is your turn, they will unmute your microphone. Also, please email any documents that you need to use in your presentation to planning@dmgov.org. For those presenting today, hopefully you have already sent those in. If you wish to share any photos, documents, plans, drawings, et cetera, you will use in your presentation, send those to planning@dmgov.org. Once all concerned citizens have spoken, the board will then ask any additional questions of city staff. And lastly, the applicant will be given three more minutes for a rebuttal or other closing comments as they so choose. All speakers are requested to begin their presentation by first giving both their name and address. If you're here as a resident of the property in question or nearby, you can give your residential address. If you're here in a professional capacity such as as an attorney, architect, engineer, or contractor, give your address of place of business. All speakers are requested to remain courteous and to focus their comments only upon those facts demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Speakers are also asked to ensure that they're respectful of time considerations. And if necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. The board will then close any further public comment on the agenda item and the board will immediately deliberate the request and we will make a decision here today. Please note that it takes at least four affirmative votes for any zoning appeal to gain approval. If your appeal is approved today, we ask that you wait until next week to contact the city's permit and development center if you will need to obtain any necessary building permits. This allows the decision of this board to be documented in the form of a decision and order. Any appeal that is approved today, we ask that you wait until next week to contact the city's permit and development center if you need to obtain any necessary building permits. Any appeal approved must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the decision of this board, or such approval shall expire. The decision of this board can only be appealed in district court. If you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations for future considerations. All material written or otherwise utilized today as part of any presentation will become a permanent part of the record and will not be returned. You may contact staff after the hearing if you need a copy of anything presented. And again, anything you do wish to present today, if you've not already provided that by email, send a copy of those documents or drawings to planning@dmgov.org. We also ask that you keep your microphone on mute other than when addressing the board to limit distractions during the hearing that is in progress. So that's all I have for our opening comments. And, um, you all don't need to look at me for the next two hours or so, so I'm, um, I'm going to go away from my, um, video presentation here. And I'm gonna turn it over to Bert Droste, uh, to review our final agenda.
Right. Mr. Chairman, it's the board, this is Bert Droste, Planner for the city. Uh, on our consent agenda today, we have items one, two, and three. And then staff is recommending that items five, which is assigned at the Des Moines Airport, and item number eight, which is a conditional use at the Scottish Rite on Woodland, um, we're recommending that those two items be moved to the consent portion of the agenda as well. So, uh, it would take a motion of a board member and a vote to move number five and number eight to the consent, but staff is, um, recommending that happen.
Okay. Um, is there anyone present here by Zoom or by telephone that would object to moving item five, which is a variance request for a sign within the boundaries of the Des Moines Airport Authority at 3101 Army Post, that's item five, or to move item eight, a conditional use permit request at Scottish Rite Park at 2909 Woodland? Is there anybody here in opposition to either five or eight? If so, please either raise your hand through Zoom or hit star nine on your phone to be recognized. And we're gonna have staff monitor that. I'll do a going once, going twice. Um, if I don't see any objections to that. Staff, do we see any objections on moving five or eight to consent? Okay, seeing none, my fellow board members. Um, if there are not any concerns, would there be a motion to move items five and eight to consent?
So moved.
All right, motion by Nathan.
Marla will second.
Second by Marla. All those in favor, uh, I guess we'll just do a real quick roll call through Tyler.
Nathan Blake.
Aye.
Cindy Smith.
Aye.
Marla Jones.
Aye.
Lynn Carlson.
Aye.
Dave Gare. Justin Gross. Justin?
Aye.
And Mel Penns?
Aye.
Okay, so that moves items five and eight to consent. Now, what we're gonna do here real briefly is I will review quickly. Um, we have items one, two, and three. Um, and if there's anybody that does not want to see these items approved or does not agree with the staff recommendations, then we would consider these items in the regular agenda. Otherwise, we would be voting to approve items one, two, three, five, and eight. So I'm gonna list those quickly. And again, if you're opposed to us granting the requested relief or variances on any of these items, uh, raise your hand through Zoom or hit star nine on your phone to be recognized. Uh, item one is a conditional use permit request at 6218 Willow Mare Drive related to Cornerstone Family Church. Item two is a conditional use permit request by Skyline Trucking at 3220 Dixon Street. Item three is a zoning exception request uh, for come and go at 3104 University Avenue. And I'll just read them again. Item five is a variance request for the Des Moines Airport Authority at 3101 Army Post. And item eight, a conditional use permit request at 2909 Woodland Avenue. Is there anybody that would object, uh, to granting approvals for the requested relief on items one, two, three, five, or eight? Uh, if so, ask to have your hand shown through Zoom or hit star nine on your phone at this time. So going once, going twice. Staff, do you see any objections? Okay. Does not hear that we have any objections? So for the members of the board, unless there's any questions, comments, or concerns, would there be a motion to grant the requested relief subject to staff recommendations on items one, two, three, five, and eight?
Lynn Carlson, I saw move.
Is there a second?
Second by Cindy Smith.
All right, so we got a motion by Lynn and a second by Cindy uh, to grant, um, requested appeals on items one, two, three, five, and eight. All those in favor on the zoning board of adjustments say aye or nay, and we'll do that through roll call.
Cindy Smith.
Aye.
Marla Jones.
Aye.
Lynn Carlson.
Aye.
Dave Gare.
Aye.
Justin Gross.
Aye.
Nathan Blake.
Aye.
And Mel Penns?
Aye. Okay, so motion carries unanimously. So, um, if you're here in the audience and you were here for items one, two, three, five, or eight, those items have been approved subject to the applicant meeting the staff conditions, uh, in the agenda and report. Uh, a copy of the approval through a decision and order will be issued next week. And, uh, you'll be able to contact city staff if you'd like a copy of that. And I think they'll provide you one, uh, for the record regardless. Uh, so if you were here for items one, two, three, five, or eight, you're welcome to leave the hearing and thank you very much. Um, so we'll move on to the regular portion of the agenda now. And, um, we'll take testimony on item number four, uh, which is a variance request by the Des Moines Council of St. Vincent de Paul Society at 520 Army Post Road. And, uh, we'll let city staff give a brief summary of the proposal and the appeal to kick us off.
Chairman, members of the board, it's, uh, Jason Van Essen with the city planning staff. Um, item four is, uh, on Army Post Road. Let me go ahead and bounce to the map. Here we go. Subject property is highlighted in yellow. It's on the south side of the Army Post Road corridor to the east of the Southwest Ninth, uh, intersection. You can see in the aerial that the property has two strip center, uh, buildings. The, um, tenant space that we're gonna be discussing today is in the southern building, the western portion. And I'll have some photographs and more information that'll help describe that a little further. Looking back into the site, you can see the tenement bay of, of discussion back here in the corner. Hopefully you can see the mouse here and, um, moving around on the screen. A little closer up in the picture. In your packet, you receive a copy of the staff report. Uh, provides, um, information on the section of code that pertains to the proposal, additional analysis from staff, description of the property, and then also our recommendation. As highlighted in the report, um, the zoning ordinance allows window signs to cover up to 25% of the window opening. Uh, the applicant today is proposing to cover 100% of the window opening, uh, for the tenant space. I'll go ahead and jump to the rationale, the recommendation, and then go show you their submittal, and then we did, um, have the response map for you in one response card. Um, we've reviewed this against the variance criteria, uh, which is included in the staff report and are making the recommendation that granting the variance would not be consistent with the intended spirit of the zoning ordinance. The appellant has not demonstrated the criteria for granting a variance. The subject property can yield a reasonable return without the relief. The intent of the zoning code, excuse me, is to limit the size of window signs so that windows remain largely transparent and further into the design goals, uh, chapter 135 of the city code. In the body of the staff report, we did, um, reference chapter 135, which is kind of the, uh, the partner code in the, in the overall city ordinance to the zoning ordinance. And a, a large goal of that chapter is to have transparency and to, um, invisibility into storefronts. Um, and so we wanted to bring that to the attention. And also note that there is, depending on what the board's action would be, um, we would have to get a little more information from the applicant as with regard to the transparency of the whole strip center of the southern building. And there is a chance that, um, it might need relief, um, either from staff through a type one design alternative view or the planning zoning commission uh, through the type two design alternative process. That'd be something that we'd sort out with applicant. It's a graphic showing the sign design. Photograph from the applicant, uh, close up to those windows, a close shot. We had one response. This is a response card, I'll leave it up for a second so you can get a look at it. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, that the board has.
Any questions for Jason?
Jason, this is Lynn Carlson. I have a question. It's so if they put these coverings on the inside, it would be okay, but we're discussing it being on the outside, correct?
No, um, my understanding with the new ordinance is that it doesn't matter if it's on inside or the outside of the window. Um, that, that is something that, uh, the old ordinance, if, um, if it was in the inside of the building, it wasn't regulated. But with the new ordinance, I, the way it was crafted, it, it doesn't matter.
Thank you.
Okay. Hey, Jason, it's Mel Penns here. Um, this isn't too far from me, so I'm kind of familiar with the, uh, Army Post Plaza there. Um, will this business be just, I, I know you said it'd be in the southern building. Is it just going to be in like the western half? Or will it be in the entire facade of the southern building?
It's, uh, the western half approximately. I'm not 100% sure exactly how much, uh, of the total building it occupies, but I don't believe it's, I think it's less than half, but the, the appellant probably knows that.
All right, yeah, close enough on that. Um, in general, what is the business type? I think I have an ID here, but, but I don't know that is, that that has been expressed. Is this a store, storefront?
You know, I'm not 100% sure of their complete operation, so I'd have to defer that to the applicant.
I will ask them accordingly then. Okay, um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jason from the board members?
Yeah, Jason, this is Justin Gross. Um, and I'm still trying to get familiar with the, the, the difference between exception and variance, but i- is there a possibility that there could be an exception? And I know it'd be like a lower percentage of the coverage of window.
I believe that, that it's a, a variance because of the way the, um, the language is drafted in the ordinance. I'll have to, maybe Sue Ann Donovan can, uh, fill us in, um, on that. But I know we discussed it as staff, but I, I think because it's almost a definition like, um, the way this particular, uh, provision is written out, that I think it had to be a variance no matter what. But I'll, um, I don't know, Sue, if you could, if you're available to respond to that.
Chair members of the board, um, I am not sure, but let me look it up. And when it's my turn to comment, maybe I'll have some more information.
Thank you very much. All right, so hold that thought, uh, Mr. Gross, and we will come back to that. Um, do we have any other questions for staff before we take further testimony? Okay, all right, seeing none. Uh, the applicant, so, um, representative of the applicant, you've got up to 10 minutes to present your reasoning for your variance request. And we need you to start with your name, uh, spell, spell it if necessary, and your, um, address. And you've got the floor.
Hi, this is Josh Johnston from Image 360. Um, our address is 8445 Hickman Road in Urbandale. Um, we're the sign contractor and I was the one who submitted the original sign permit application. And I can pull up here and see if I can share my screen.
I don't know that you'll be able to. You could email it to planning@dmgov.org. One of the co-hosts, pull it up.
Um, well, and I can read my, um, I can read my, uh, BOA application in which I had to fill out the zoning variance.
Um, and I guess. If there's a, sorry to interject, but if there's a particular vid, uh, image that was in my presentation that you'd like me to go back to, I'd be happy to do that.
Right, yeah, sure. If you wanna pull up the sign rendering first.
Okay.
Cause then, yeah, and I surveyed onsite to measure all of these windows as well. Um, I was given this by, um, Broadlawn's. So it says on there that it's like the church of something is the technical owner, but then it's Broadlawn's and then it's WIC. And WIC is the national, um, it's like food, um, you know, food program. And they sent me, they sent me their rendering on their national branding, um, in which case they had done this on essentially all of their locations. And it would be perforated material, so there would still be some visibility in and out, both from inside and outside. Um, in my, and also to address the amount of the building, I think there's like four to five tenants on that south building. So this is maybe, like you said, at most a quarter of the entire building. Um, and you can't see the tenants off to the left that used to be, I think Bourbon Street. And, um, so there's a few others that are not visible there. But then in my, um, zoning variance, part of their national campaign and, you know, branding to do this is mostly for privacy reasons. Um, and it's not a storefront. Like I said, it's a, a food, um, program. And I put in my zoning variance, um, my reasoning, the nature of WIC South Des Moines Business is that it requires privacy of customers, both macro, visibility of persons through windows and micro paperwork documents, et cetera. Um, WIC South, WIC South Des Moines Tenant Space is currently times four large mid, uh, large windows, um, none of which are tinted or have any film applied. Um, and then I further said, no physical alterations of the building or storefront required. Graphics are also not visible from Army Post Road. Um, you kind of have to drive back into that complex to even see this storefront, um, but mostly for privacy reasons from the parking lot and the sidewalk out front. Um, other than that, I mean, I don't know, like you said, if there would be a middle ground that would be approved between 25 and 100% coverage of these windows and doors. I also don't, I believe Brian Davis, um, who I submitted my sign permit to, said that the new, uh, code does include doors, whereas previously the square footage of the doors did not apply to that 25 or 100% that we're discussing. So if there was a middle ground between 25 and 100 and I have to just tell my customer, you know, that's what the city said, then, then I'm okay with that. But 25% of these windows, if it is indeed including the square footage of the doors, would not leave me, which very, with very much perf on the windows. Um, I think that that's pretty much all I've got as far as my notes.
Okay, excellent. Um, and just, just to clarify, the upper image, the red, that's just designed to show the square footage.
Correct, the dimensions, yes.
Yeah, so the lower picture, that's the finished product. Um, and you're kind of presenting what is usually the opposite of most applicants. Most applicants want big signs to attract everyone. You're, you're basically saying this isn't about being super visible, this is more about screening. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. And I think our perf material is 50/50. Um, there's different percentages of the holes in the perf material. There's 70, 30, 60, 40, ours is 50/50. So like I said, it would still be more visible from the inside out than it would from the outside in, but it won't be a fully opaque coverage of the windows.
Okay. Uh, other questions from board members? Going once, going twice. Um, and I do have one more question for you, sir. Um, well, actually two quick ones. I, I see there's already kind of a WIC, a WIC sign above the storefront. Is that going to remain as is?
I believe so. We did not produce or install that. Um, we were contracted, um, to quote this after the fact. Um, yeah.
All right. And is there a reason why you couldn't put this applique on the backside of the window on the interior?
Um, well, this perf material, the adhesive is on the non-graphic side, so it would essentially need to hang it via suction drops or something from the inside.
I got it, okay, excellent. Okay, anybody have any other questions? Okay, well, um, so seeing none, you can go ahead and take a break there, sir. And, um, we will see what other, uh, comments we have from the public. Um, is there anybody that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request? They can have up to five minutes. And to be recognized through Zoom, again, just use the raise your hand function on the right-hand side of your screen down toward the bottom. Or if you're on the phone, hit star nine to be recognized. Anybody wishes to speak in support? Going once, going twice. Okay, I don't think I see any. Um, is there anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Same sign. Raise your right hand through Zoom or hit star nine on your phone to be recognized. Okay, seeing none. Is there anybody that has just a general comment they'd like to share in a more neutral mode even? Going once, going twice. Okay, if there are none, then, um, um, we'll see if we have any further questions for staff from the board members. Board, do you have any questions? from the board members. Board, do you have any questions for city staff?
This is Nathan Blake. I guess I do. There are other ways, if the intent is to screen from the inside, there are other things they could do that wouldn't involve signage, right? Or would a like non, with something that's put up there with the same amount of screening, but without any signage on it, be considered signage? Obviously, it would limit the amount of sign that they would maybe allow to have, because it would reduce the window percentage. Would they be able to do that?
Chair, members of the board, this is Sue Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement officer. To go back to the percentage question, an exception could be granted up to 50% of the applicable numerical regulation. Additionally, I believe Nathan is correct. They could, they could put some opaque cover on the window, as long as it doesn't violate the transparency requirements in 135. And and use the signage some somewhat differently.
Okay, all right, good question, Nathan. Any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. Since we had a question for staff, the applicant has the right, if they want to add anything quickly, they can. You've got up to three minutes. If you feel like you've presented your case, you don't have to add anything if you don't want, but we'll give you the floor for any closing comments at this time if you'd like to.
Yeah, I think I would be okay with, I mean, I guess my question would be, right, if there, if the I'll have to look in 135 as far as transparency goes, because you mentioned opaque, and I mean opaque would be solid white or solid black versus a tint of sorts. But if, yeah, if we would, I think if we approve a 50% coverage of, you know, signage of the perf material, then I can relay out that design, and if I need to resubmit that, that's fine, and then just do a tint of sorts. I mean, I don't know, I'll have to, like I said, check 135 or chapter 135 to see if it allows completely opaque, in which case I could just do a white stripe and then perf for the graphics, and if I need to separate that out, you know, that's fine. And I'll just tell my customer that, you know, you guys are already making an exception to go from 25 to 50 for us, so.
And Mr. Chair, this is Bert. I should interject that a 50% increase over 25% would only allow them to have 37.5% of any window or any door be covered.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, if those are your closing comments, sir, thank you very much. We'll go ahead now and close the public portion of the agenda and go to board deliberation. And if any one of my colleagues wants to kick off some thoughts or discussion, I would appreciate it.
Lynn Carlson, I got some comments or questions, thoughts? Um, WIC is for low income, basically, single mothers or low-income families, so I see the need for privacy. It's hard enough to ask for help as it is and to have, you know, maybe people see what you're doing in. And also, the protection of private information is very important at the desk or the front of the store. With this being a 50% opacity or however the word is, because it's perforated, you could, basically, only 50% they're asking for is actual sign. The rest is window. It's just kind of the way it's done. I think some consideration could be given to that. Those are my thoughts.
Great, thank you, Lynn. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Okay, um, Lynn, I appreciate what what you had noted. I think one of the issues we we have here is we can understand where, just as Lynn said, there is a concern for client privacy and client needs. There are doctors' offices, dentist's offices, other medical clinics that have requirements to, they have like windows in them. There are ways that one can do some screening or or seek to have some kind of things either behind the windows, inside. I don't think it's up to the board or necessary for this board to come up with how they can effectively do their screening. This, as presented, is a sign, so they wouldn't necessarily have to have a sign to do their screening. This was the choice that the customer gave to their signed contractor, and he did a fine job of presenting it. So I don't know that that we need to entirely solve their complete issue. What we need to do is look at what is in front of us. Does this fit the character and intent of the signage ordinance, the intent of the neighborhood? And I would contend that there should be ways that they can work within the existing ordinance to meet the needs they have.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
This is Justin Gross. I would be in favor, actually, of allowing the exception, especially since the exception is a lower standard or burden of proof to show, so I know that would not, you know, we would have to deny the requested variance, but then I would, I guess, be in favor of allowing the exception.
Okay, and Justin, what what is your reasoning even at the exception level?
Well, I mean, I don't think it doesn't, I'm trying to go off the top of my head of what the exception burden is.
Wouldn't have an adverse effect to the immediate neighborhood?
Right, it would be in, yeah, it would, it wouldn't cause any sort of nuisance or traffic issues. It would, it would kind of be in the spirit and the intent of the area.
Got it. Okay, so is that an official motion then?
Well, I know there's probably some other opinions out there, deliberation, but I would, I would certainly like to make that motion if if there's other people in favor of that.
And we can have more discussion on that, but 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 yes, procedurally, we may have to look at denying the variance but granting an exception. Are there any other thoughts or comments?
If that was a motion, I'll second it just to get the, get it kind of booked, and we can discuss it.
Yep, and I appreciate that. Judy, as legal counsel, can we have one motion to, if somebody so chose to make it to deny the variance, but proceed with an exception level request in one motion? Can we do that?
No, to the most extreme, grant of relief, there are probably additional or more options than just one in terms of what we would want to be okay with.
Okay, Judy, I missed out on part of that. Were you maybe on on mute? For a little bit?
Let me see. No, I'm not muted. Did that not pick up?
Yeah, please start again.
Okay, it is, it is more acceptable if we can have a denial of the variance, because there are multiple options. If we have denied the variance, which is the most extreme relief that they have asked for, but then allow discussion as to what other options, and then move forward with the motion that way.
Okay, because there there are times if we just say no to a variance and deny the relief, then we just move on with the next agenda item.
Correct.
So in 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 this case, we would make some statement, or the board would have its discretion to say we'd like to continue discussion for other relief on this item.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, I'm gonna go back to my good colleagues, Nathan and Justin. Would you guys like to put a motion together formally then on this first part?
Chair, Mr. Chair. So from my understanding, what Legal has said, that we would initially start with the motion to deny the variance.
Correct. Correct.
So I make a motion to deny the variance.
Is there a second?
This is Nathan, I'll second.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Justin, second by Nathan, to deny the requested variance. All those in favor will take roll call, say aye or nay.
Martin Marles Jones.
And gotta take your mute off, maybe?
Marles Jones.
Bottom left, Marles, I think.
Lynn Carlson.
Aye.
Dave Gere.
Aye.
Justin Gross.
Aye.
Nathan Blake.
Aye.
Cindy Smith.
Aye.
Marles.
Aye.
And Mel Pin.
Aye.
Okay, so motion carries, believe unanimously for denial of the variance. Is there any other discussion in regard to this agenda item by the board?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, is that unanimous, since Marles didn't actually, we didn't hear her?
Tyler came around to her at the back end. I think she said aye.
Correct, yes.
Yes. Good job, all. Okay, is there any other discussion on this agenda item?
Mr. Chair, this is Justin Gross. I would like to make a motion to grant an exception that would be consistent with the intended spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, and would that generally allow them to have a sign that is somewhat similar to what is proposed, but still within the confines of the exception?
Correct, and would would be allowed to go up to like 37.5%?
So can I ask real quick, this is legal counsel, so you are asking or including in that up to the maximum amount allowed under an exception?
That's correct, legal.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, would there be some further discussion on that?
We'll need a second of that, Chair.
Yeah. Is there any other discussion on that, or would there be a second to go with that?
This is Marles, I will second.
Okay, I think Justin's made his reasoning clear from our previous discussion. All those in favor of granting the requested relief at the maximum exception level request for installation of the sign generally as shown for design and content, raise your right hand, or acknowledge by saying aye or nay at roll call.
Nathan Blake.
Aye.
Cindy Smith.
Aye.
Marles Jones.
Aye.
Lynn Carlson.
Aye.
Dave Gere. Justin Gross.
Aye.
And Mel Pin.
Aye. Okay, I believe that motion carries unanimously as well. I appreciate you coming in today, sir, and representing St. Vincent de Paul, and I'm sure that you'll be able to track them through this and get your sign permit finalized. Thank you for your time today. Okay, that'll take us then to item number six, which is a reconsideration of a conditional use permit request at 204 Third Street.
Chair, members of the board, this is Sue Ann Donovan, the zoning enforcement officer, and I will be presenting today. So this is the property. It's located at Court and Third Street. It's Annie's Irish Pub. It has a small interior bar in a larger patio to the south of the building. This is a letter that was sent to Annie's Irish Pub, Ms. Baldwin, on April 21st of 2020, pointing out some specific, but not limited to, times where there were live DJ events on the patio without a sound permit. Here's the board of adjustment application filled out and submitted. This is an email that we received from Annie, wherein she does indicate that there were DJ events on the patio without a permit on some of the dates that we had listed in the letter to her. Here again is the decision and order that was entered August 25th of 2020, granting the conditional use permit to the property at that address, August 25th of 2020, sorry.
I don't mean to interrupt, but can you have staff work to make this just a little larger? It just seems like, for some reason, I'm
struggling. Is that better?
Yeah, in the year 2020.
Yes, yeah.
So August 25th of 2010, the board of adjustment issued the property a conditional use to allow sale of alcohol as a bar. One of the conditions was that they comply with Article 4 of Chapter 42 of the Code for Telling a Noise Control. Noise control ordinance dictates that they have to have a sound permit to have live events outside.
Okay.
So the ordinance that they're under was, is 15566 that was passed. Some of the provisions in here indicate that the Class A permit, which she is entitled to, or Annie's Irish Pub is entitled to, is for live music, reproduced music, human speech, eight times in a month in a 30-day period. They have to list it on the permit, and it's not transferable to other dates. So that would be part of the ordinance that needs to be complied with. So then, exhibit number three, we're gonna go through these kind of quickly, because I don't want to take up a lot of time. Exhibit number three is the June permits and the dates that she listed that she was going to use the permits. We found evidence that on 612 and exhibit number four, there's croaky, and exhibits four, or five and six, there's a DJ on the patio June 23rd. Exhibit number three. Wait a minute. Exhibit number seven is the July permits, and again, it lists the dates that they were to have live music on the patio. Exhibit number eight indicates there was a DJ on the patio on July 3rd and July 4th. Exhibit number nine indicates that there was a patio event on July 21st. Exhibit number 10 shows an advertisement for an event on a Facebook post for July 28th. Exhibit number 12, are sound permits for August of 2019. Again, it shows the dates the permits were to be used. In exhibit number 13, shows a DJ was on the patio or advertised on the patio for August 4th, August 11th, number, and then 818, 825. Exhibit number 14 shows something on the bar patio on August 4th. Exhibit 15 is the sound permits for September, showing the dates that she was to use her sound permits. Exhibit 16 shows a DJ was on the patio for Sun, Sunday, Fun Day. September 8th, they advertised for a DJ on September 8th, September 15th, September 22nd, September 29th. Exhibit number 18 shows an advertisement or a Facebook page post from September 27th. Number 19 those permits that were issued for October 2019, again, showing the dates they were to be used. Exhibit number 20 shows a DJ advertised for October 2nd, or a Facebook page shows the use on October 2nd. The 21st, there was a DJ advertised, and that was in exhibit number 21. And on 1013, and on 1020. Exhibit number 22 indicates someone was on the patio on 1010. Exhibit number twenty-two indicates someone was on the patio on ten-ten. Obviously, the, the events on the patio, as shown in Facebook postings, that were outside of the permits, that's a violation of the sound ordinance. Therefore, we're bringing this back for reconsideration.
Okay, all right, so Sue Ann, is, is that your, your summary of your actions?
Yes, the, the board has the right to reconsider this. Here's a picture of the bar area.
Okay.
This shows the outside bar area. This is from down the street on Court Avenue.
Okay.
Here's, here are the cards and the consent map.
This is Nathan, I've got a couple of quick questions, if that's all right.
Uh, do you wanna go through the rest of the consent map?
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, when, when, when you're through with your presentation, just let us know, Sue Ann.
Okay, thank you. This is a, a communication that we received, um, regarding this proposal from Larry Smithson. He talks about occupancy load and some other things. Really what's before us is not occupancy load, it's the sound permit violation. Here's, here, I'll let you kinda look at the consent and the, the cards that came back. Second one, violation of noise. Now we have a positive response.
Okay. Thank you, that helps. All right. And Sue, Sue Ann, uh, one question. I am in favor of the request, like with these two cards, it looks like they're concerned, so they would be in favor of reconsidering the permit, is that correct?
That's the way it appears, yes, they're in favor of reconsideration.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make that clear.
But this is similar in nature to other bars that have come back to you for reconsideration, for violations of noise control ordinance. The noise control ordinance is, is a way that the city balances the, uh, rights of the business owners and the rights of the citizens in the area. Uh, i- it's a way of controlling the amount of noise that neighbors have to be, um, listening to. Uh, this is a violation by, um, attempting to not use the sound permits correctly. The, in the past, bars and annies could get variances to have more sound ordinance, more noise permits than the eight a month. And in twenty-seventeen, council rejected that right to do that by saying that a variance has to be granted based on a hardship, that does not include an economic hardship. So in twenty-eighteen and nineteen, there were no variances that Annie could get, but it apparently she went ahead and had more noise on the patio than was allowed. If you look at her permits, she understands that DJs need to have permits because she puts on there that it's for DJs, but then the DJs were on the patio for d- days that weren't permitted. So, it needs to be reconsidered, and, uh, staff recommendation is to take away the conditional use permit. Other bars, you have allowed them to ke- keep the conditional use permit, but taking away the right to have amplified music other than background sound on pa- patios. So, I will leave it up to the discretion of the board, um, for the reconsideration. That's all I have at this point.
Okay, all right, do we have some questions for Sue Ann?
Yeah, this is Nathan, uh, and I apologize if you addressed this and I just somehow missed it. Are, were all of these performances outside, or were some of them inside, or were they all inside? What was the mix?
I believe they were all outside. The inside bar is very limited in space, so you could maybe have karaoke inside, but most of these were advertised as patio events.
And then, my, my second question, I, I think I know the answer, is, I mean, if we're reconsidering it, we could not pull it all together. We could just put in new provisions that would restrict, say, any sort of live music from happening ever, or any live music from happening outside, or something else like that, is that correct?
Correct. And you have done that on other, other venues. You have, you have further limited or further explained, uh, what they can do to stay in compliance and keep their conditional use permit.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, other questions for Sue Ann? Okay, Sue Ann, I've got a quick one for you. Uh, you've, you, you had some good documentation there of what Annie applied for, what she agreed to do, and obviously what was done. At any time, did you provide notice to the establishment or to her that they were violating the terms of the conditional use permit request? And I apologize if you had a, something on that that you presented.
No, on any of the bars that have violated their conditional use permit, we bring it back to you.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to be clear on that, I understand that, thank you very much.
Sue Ann. Chair, I have a question real quick.
Jump in.
Thank you, um, Sue Ann, um, i- is this bar or establishment, are they repeat offenders? Are they offended before?
Well, in twenty-nineteen, they offended, they've had other offense, they've had other things that we brought to their attention, but that's not what's before you today.
Sure.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay, all right. Okay, all right, all right, if there are no other questions for Sue Ann, I'll say going once, going twice. Okay, we'll turn this over to the holder of the conditional use permit for this location. They can have up to ten minutes to address the board as well.
Can you hear me? This is Annie Baldwin, two oh six Third Street, Des Moines. I did not intentionally violate any of these sound permits. Every January, I meet with the city officials and get all my sound permits for the entire year and pay for them. This past January, I did that. That is when I officially found out through email from Sue what I needed for noise permits. If I had music on Sunday afternoons, someone with a guitar or a DJ, I would need a noise permit. I did bingo or cor- uh, trivia night, or a guy walking around with a microphone. I need, until nine PM on Wednesday, I needed a noise permit. I did not know this, so I immediately, in good faith, went to city council on March fourth, twenty-twenty. The city council of Des Moines agreed with me that this is a problem. There is no reason people should not, should only be allowed eight permits per month. I was being proactive in trying to solve this problem on March fourth. On April twenty-first, this complaint came to my attention, and I checked the records, there were sixteen claims, five of them happened, and they were on Sunday afternoons, um, which I did not know was a violation. I've always worked with the city officials and the Des Moines police. In fact, I have three places in the Court Avenue area. I've never received any noise violation in any of those places, and as far as I know, in the past twelve years, I haven't had any complaints at the Annie's location. I've hosted Saint Pat- Patrick's Day Street Party every year with no problems where there's thousands of people gathered on Court Avenue. I'm the vice president of the historic Court District. I've always worked with the police and operation downtown. I'm the one for responsible for hiring and paying off duty police around Court Avenue. I collect for that every year. When the same operators refuse to pay for the off-duty police, I end up paying for them out of my own money. I've worked with the city to get cameras installed all over Court Avenue, including the alleyways, and making sure Court Avenue was lit proper, properly to make it safer. A few years ago, when there were shootings and stabbings all over Court Avenue because of a road car, a group of us overpaid and bought that car so Court Avenue would be a safer place for everyone. I've always been proactive with the city. After almost three months of being closed due to COVID-nineteen, it's important to reestablish Court Avenue Entertainment District in a safe way and without creating controversy for the entire city. I worked on finding out what all the surrounding cities do for their noise ordinances and gave that information to Sue Ann. I have given the city council and Sue Ann my suggestions for solving these noise permit issues. It is a gray area, because you will always have bad actors who do intentionally break the rules, maybe to save money, or they're negligent, or they don't actually work their businesses. I'm not one of those owners. I am very involved in my businesses, and Sue Ann, the city knows I'm hands-on, and my word is my word. I will always work with other city officials, and you want people like me operating on Court Avenue, trying to make this a safe entertainment district. I talked to the owner of Three Hundred Rooftop yesterday. He said he's allowed twelve noise permits per month, and it's based on decibel levels. I mean, I think that there's several businesses that if we could come to an agreement on how to do things where it's more than eight and nobody's taking advantage of the situation, it would be the right path to take, so there is an entertainment district down here. Um, you know, my patio is only viable for six months a year, and I've already been closed for three months right now. I have a five thousand square foot patio, and we purchased this property in two thousand and eight. So I'm asking, and I did go forward and ask for a variance, um, do you have anything you wanna say? But, you know, I just wanna make sure that you hear my side of it, and I did not know I was intent, you know, I was not intentionally violating, I thought you could have someone out there on Sunday after, afternoons. You know, there's no pattern of me violating these conditions. And once I was informed of this, I went, I went straight to city council trying to solve the problem. Thank you.
Okay, all right, Annie, are you available to take a few questions from the board?
Yes.
All right, board members, any questions for Ms. Baldwin?
Lynn Carlson, I have a question. Um, see, I don't have a calendar in front of me, so all the dates that were listed in the violation, are all those Sunday afternoons then? And you didn't need a permit on Sunday?
All of those, I believe that, um, I think there was one Saturday on there, but the, but I did not have a DJ on that Saturday. And then the other, the five that were ones that legitimately I had a DJ out there until eight PM were Sunday afternoons. I think there was six out of the sixteen, to be correct, six, and they were all Sunday afternoon, yes.
And why did you think Sunday was exempt?
Because everyone else downtown had, um, DJs or, you know, an acoustic guitar player on Sunday afternoon. And I always firmly believed that the noise permits I was getting were Fridays and Saturdays, so we could go an hour later into the night than a normal. That's how it was always, that's how it's always been. So you go in and you get your Fridays and Saturdays. And then I found out January twenty, twenty-twenty via email from, uh, the city. You know, I was also doing a trivia night on Wednesdays till nine PM. And I found out, nope, you can't do that either on the patio.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Annie, uh, this is Mel Penn's here, the board chair. I wanna give you credit for a lot of the work that you've done on Court Avenue, and, um, as you know, it's considered Des Moines' entertainment district. There's a lot of good that goes with that, there's a lot of responsibility that goes with that. If anybody knows that, it's you. So where I'm still unclear is, if you physically filled out your permit request for when you wanted to have, uh, these live sound events, why were you not able to comply with your own permit that you submitted?
Well, I did not know when I submitted those, like I said to you guys, on Fridays and Saturdays, that's how I have done it for years. The original conditional use permit was in two thousand and ten, which I believe that my husband filled out as the landowner. And I told Sue Ann when she, uh, brought this complaint, or told me about the complaint in April, I said, I don't even have a conditional use permit. I said, the last time I went down there was two thousand and seventeen, when I was gonna build the big rooftop restaurant down there.
Yes, we remember that.
Yeah, she said, oh no, you have one from two thousand and ten. Which, to be honest with you, ten years ago, I didn't even know I had this. So I have always done it the exact same way, and I've never had any complaints, or never realized that you could not have someone out there on a Sunday afternoon.
Well, well, Annie, I was on the zoning board of adjustment in twenty-ten, and I remember issuing that conditional use permit. And those conditional use permits run with the property. So, this isn't a matter of, gee, I kinda forgot I had something, so I did it the other way that, kinda how I thought my neighbors were doing it. Um, what I'm concerned about is, uh, uh, again, you, you were given a permit, you were given the conditions, you told the city what it is you were doing in writing. If that was incorrect at the time, it could have been addressed. So you told them what you were gonna do in writing, um, and then you went and did other things. This is about your location and the issues at this location, uh, not because everybody else did it. What I would like to ask you here is, you said that when you got the violations from Sue Ann, you went to city council. Did the city council issue any communication or direction, uh, to the best of your knowledge? Did you receive a letter back from city council? Or do you know city council directed staff to do anything particular?
When I got the email realizing that you can't do these, you, you have to have a noise permit on Sundays in, in the city, and it is eight, that's when I went to city council, and Sue Ann was at city council, and, uh, city council said, you know, we need to fix this because they're non-transferable, nobody can predict the weather, and, um, we did, uh, we did send a letter to city council, but I did not know about this, with these complaints, until April twenty-first, and these exact complaints from last summer.
Okay, all right.
City council said, we do have to fix this problem.
Okay, all right, um, thank you very much. Any other questions for Ms. Baldwin? Okay, seeing none, thank you for your testimony. Um, and I will have staff assist me here for our next step. Do we have those who wish to speak in support of the city's position? Step forward, is that how it works, or asked to be recognized? Judy?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, oh, all right, so, um, the city is asked to have the conditional use permit reconsidered. Staff recommendation is for revocation. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in support of that request by the city? Please hit star nine on your phone, or hit the raise hand icon on your Zoom app. And we'll say going once, going twice. Okay, I don't see any there, unless staff sees anybody. All right, is there anybody that wishes to speak in opposition to the city's request to reconsider this conditional use permit? If there is, they can have up to five minutes to address the board, and same thing, star nine on your phone to be recognized, or hit the raise hand icon in the Zoom app. Going once, going twice. Okay, would there anybody who wishes to speak neutrally? Okay, all right, seeing none. The zoning enforcement, uh, officer has the opportunity to make a statement at this time, if she so feels.
Chair members of the board, I'd like to do a, a short rebuttal, um, or my comments. Uh, number one, Annie didn't go to council. Council directed staff to look into her requests. We have gotten no response from council as to how to deal with this, so we do not have direction to fix anything at this point.
Okay.
If Annie's a good business owner, and she's been doing this for a number of years, and coming down and getting permits and variances when they used to be allowed... and variances when they used to be allowed, I would think she would know what that permit allows her to do. It shows sort of a pattern of practice of having Sunday fun days outside of the permits, um, which is sort of skipping around what she's supposed to do and agree to do.
Okay.
The rooftop is not, is not authorized to have 12 permits a month. I don't know where they came up with that number.
Okay, and there, there, there is no rooftop at this time, correct?
I believe there's something over at 300 ML King. It's, it's a bar on top of the roof that overlooks Sailor.
I, yeah, I, I apologize. I, I was, besides the brand name, I was saying of Annie's rooftop. Uh, she, she, she did not go forward with the renovation plans that we had approved a couple of years ago.
Correct.
Okay, all right. But yes, there's another place called the rooftop, right?
I think it's a little bit hard for me to believe that Annie, who's been pulling permits for years, picks her dates, knows what she's supposed to do, is now claiming she didn't know that she couldn't have these events. That's just, I'm finding that hard to believe. Um, that's all I have to say.
Okay, all right. Do we have any questions for Sue Ann or city staff from the board?
Mr. Chair, this is Justin Gross. Uh, Sue Ann, uh, Ms. Baldwin emphasized, um, that a majority of her violations happen on Sunday, but I think her testimony was six out of the 16 of the violations were on Sunday. Was that, is that a fair statement?
I believe what she said is that of the 16 that were given her in the notice to come to the board, only six of those actually occurred and those were on Sunday. She's, I think what she's saying is the other 10 did not happen.
Oh, that they did not happen?
I believe that's what she said.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, and I think she alluded to that the other 10 might have been like the Wednesday night, um, trivia, which was using speakers with, with live music. A noise permit, not music.
The permit covers live music, reproduced music and human speech.
Right, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's amplified sound regardless of if it's music or an oratory or a narrative, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, Sue Ann, if I recall correctly, we had a case where we had a long time operator who also didn't seem to understand what had been agreed to in their conditional use permit request. And I think in lieu of, you know, revoking the entire conditional use permit, so you can't have a tavern anymore, we had put some conditions on where they were limited for a period of X amount of months to know, I think it was live slash amplified performances for a period of time. Uh, would you have a general idea of, of what kind of length of time we, we, we might have done that embargo?
I don't believe that you, I don't recall that the board did a length of time. I believe that on at least one occasion, there was an amendment of the conditional use permit to more fully clarify what was allowed.
Okay, okay.
There was, and, and then there was one that again clarified what was allowed. There was one that prohibited totally, uh, anything but Class E. The board did not put a timeline on that. So I would think that after a year, that could come back for reconsideration.
Okay, yeah, so, so we've had some more of a, we've limited the number of live events. We've had some where we said, hey, sorry, but you got to go back to a Class E. And if you behave, you can come back and ask for reconsideration. Some to that degree.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, can you clarify for me what a Class E is again? I, my mind's not working, this is Lynn Carlson.
Yeah, it's a good question. Sue Ann, can you help us? What's a Class E sound permit?
A Class E sound permit is for background noise on a patio during hours of operation, roughly 65 DBC measured at the property line. It's designed to be, uh, it's sound that you can talk over.
Right. So it's background music through speakers. It could be, it could be an acoustic guitar. It could be somebody with a small microphone, but it's background. It's not something you'd hear a block away.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, all right. Okay, any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, besides our good guard dog at somebody's house. Um, we'll go to the appellate's rebuttal. So Annie, you've got up to three minutes for any closing statement or any rebuttal of any comments that have been made.
Um, I wanted to go back to the 16 dates that were in the complaint. All of them were Sundays except for a Wednesday and a Thursday, which was July 4th. Um, it looks like only six of them were, um, that I said, yes, we did have someone out there and it was a Sunday afternoon. After being closed for three months down there and I only have six months of any business down there, um, I mean, this could quite possibly put me out of business, you know, for 75 days. Having, having just that 5,000 square foot patio and not being able to have some sort of a DJ on Fridays and Saturday nights, you know, due to weather or due to anything else, you know, this is something that could kill that corner on Third and Court. I mean, this is very serious. I did give my suggestions to Sue Ann about here's how we could do this. And she suggested doing 10 days a month because sometimes weekends, there's five Fridays and five Saturdays in a month. But you could have 10 dates where you could get a noise permit, to get another day a week till 10 o'clock and be able to do Sunday afternoons. So her and I were exchanging emails about trying to solve this problem after council, and I don't remember if it was after this April 21st issue. Um, but I, I can understand where people, uh, don't work with the police down there, don't do what they're supposed to do, but I have been an operator down there that has always worked with everybody down there in the city. And I think that they would, you know, testify to my good character. And in good faith, I went to council trying to change these rules for, for everyone. So every, you know, we're not shutting down live music all over the patios of Des Moines everywhere. And that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so for this point of the process then, um, we'll close public portion and go to board deliberation.
Mr. Chair, this is Lynn Carlson. Um, assumptions are always a hard thing. I did real estate for many years and assumptions always ended up costing me money. It sounds like I have assumptions, uh, that have gone on here on doing, well, that's why I've always done it, but it's not in writing. And that is a, a real concern to me, but I also have a concern that, uh, we do have a limited amount of time left for business this year for the bars uh, with the COVID-19. And the one thing I didn't ask for, but we didn't also get is a history of complaints from the police. So I'm assuming there were not too many complaints from the police on loud music and everything. So I kind of like to maybe like to work with her for the rest of the year, but, uh, really limiting it down and just, I mean, there has to be some consequences for violations.
Okay. Okay, other thoughts? Okay, all right. Um, staff recommendation is that the conditional use permit be revoked effective immediately. So, um, in that situation then, gee, I got, had a conditional use permit to operate uh, as a bar tavern, now I guess I'm out of business. I don't want to do that to somebody either, but I continue to be frustrated, um, unconvinced and somewhat annoyed that some of our long-term tavern owners in our most intensive tavern district in the city do not seem to understand the zoning ordinance and what their limitations are in their operations. So I would encourage my board members to make it very clear what those conditions are so that if we need to walk a straight line and understand it is a line that is straight and it will be walked, that the permit holder will do so and that there will be sufficient oversight so that if they do not, it will come back to us for consideration for revocation. Um, it's, it's, it's time for us to get a handle on this so that our businesses and taverns can be successful, but they can be integrated into this district and do it within the intent of the city ordinance.
So, Mr. Chair, this is Cindy Smith. So how, so how do we do that? Do we, um, do we allow just X number per month? I, I mean, I have to agree that it seems a little odd that you would have to specify dates because we all know how the weather is. I like the, I think the idea of having X number per month versus specific dates makes a whole lot more sense to start out. The other thing that I'd like to see is to provide some leniency, but maybe, um, uh, have, have them come back in six months or in a year or whatever is reasonable just to double check. And I don't, I don't want it to, I don't want to make it a real issue or a hardship for Sue Ann's staff to have to be monitoring them all the time a lot either.
You may be on to something.
Chair members of the board, this is Sue Ann Donovan. The board cannot dictate things under chapter 42, the noise ordinance. The noise ordinance is not in your purview, so not making them pick days is not an option.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm going to allow that comment because that was our conscience speaking as far as a legal requirement.
Mr. Chair Carlson, I got an idea. If we were to allow it, but with, um, I don't know, maybe a drop dead clause that she follows the rules and if there is one violation, we're done. Is that a possibility?
Well, if it's brought back in front of us for violations, uh, you know, if they would be extreme concerns of meeting the intent and spirit of the ordinance as well as the permit, I suppose we could do that. But I think it's important to establish what those conditions might be. If we just need to reinforce the existing ones or if we need to put a little frame around this and make it much more specific. As was, as was noted, when I asked city staffs and specifically, we have had other locations where we've limited them to a number of events per month and yet those events still had to occur within the confines of the sound ordinance, which we do not have jurisdiction over.
And this is legal counsel. Ms. Carlson, if I might speak to, um, a drop dead, um, quote unquote, provision is not going to work because the code allows a hearing, which is that what you are serving as right now, the judges of whether this has been established. We would make an allegation and then you would have to hear that. We cannot take that right away.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm in favor of working out something to allow the live music, specifying, uh, that she strictly complies with the rules. Telling out that if she has, uh, somebody out there with the microphone, they need a permit.
Well, if, if the roof, if the rooftop, since that had been brought up, was allowed 12, that's, uh, three in any given week. That can cover Friday and Saturday and maybe a Wednesday night or a Sunday afternoon. Um, that's 12 events in a month. Is that a place where you'd want to start?
I think that sounds good. Should I start ma, do we have to?
Again, again, chair members of the board, that is under the noise control. They do not get 12 a month and you cannot dictate what is authorized under chapter 42.
All right, so.
42 has to be a month.
Chapter 42 allows them eight in a month.
Got it.
You can't change it to 10 or 12.
I, I, I was thinking that, that it was up to 12 per month in chapter 42, my apologies.
No, that's fine, um, chair. I think that was what was asserted in the evidence that had been alleged, but, no, it is, it is a limitation that exists in the code. We can't be, go beyond.
So if we have eight a month, that's two a weekend. That's Friday night, have a great time, Saturday night, have a great time. If it's a rain out on Saturday, I suppose that they could look at doing it on a nice Sunday afternoon.
No, chair members of the board, they can't transfer the permit once they've picked a date to use it.
All right, so, so the dates stick and no more than eight, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Chair, uh, this is Justin Gross. Um, I need to go back to this, but I mean, she's been an owner for many, many years. I, I don't think you could, ignorance is not a defense here. I, I think we have to give some sort of consequence, you know? I mean, I don't know if I'd go as far as revoking, but certainly there has to be not just a slap on the wrist here. So, you know, maybe we could limit it to four or six a month, um, for the remainder of the, the season or, uh, you know, again, I'm just kind of brainstorming here, but I think there has to be some sort of consequence.
Legal said we can't change dates, number.
You can, well.
Lower it though.
You can lower it. You can limit it to a certain number, Ms. Carlson. But what we cannot do, what I had heard originally is going to 12. There is a cap in the code of eight. If you want to go below that number and limit it to less than that, and then when the applicant applies for one of these, the applicant picks a date, we don't get to change that. So once she is committed to a date, it doesn't matter if it gets rained out, that was her choice.
Okay, thank you. Now, another question then on the Class E, if she doesn't have live music, can she do background music if she has a Class E on the date she doesn't have? Because six isn't going to cover a whole month.
Chair, members of the board, a Class E is a separate license and she can have a Class E.
She can, did you say?
She can. If the board allows her to have a Class E going, she can now have a Class E and a Class A at the same time under the ordinance. So if you want her to have a Class E and do something different with the Class A or type A permit, you can do that.
Okay.
Okay, so I think that sounds like it's a compromise we can do. I, I, there needs to be consequence, I agree with Justin on that. But, uh, the Class E is something you probably got for the other weekend. So I don't know if we need to make a motion on not revoking the conditional use permit and then allowing these other, or maybe allowing it to continue with some restrictions? I don't know what we need to do.
Well, it's staff recommendation for revocation. So you can make any motion you want to. You, you, you can say, I want to make a motion to amend the conditional use permit and then put whatever the conditions are you would like potentially, um, in there.
Okay, so this is Lynn Carlson. To get this thing moving, I'm going to move that we, um, allow her to continue her class or condition permit, but amend it to six of the live performances a month that she needs the other permit for.
Class A, yeah.
Class A and allowing her to have Class E.
Which she has by right anyway, I believe, yeah.
Okay, so that's what I would like to do is limit it to six, um, per month. And I don't know if we need to put a time limit on this and see if she can prove or follow that she can come back.
Um.
I guess.
Yeah, well, if, if somebody does it for one month and goes, hey, I'm doing really good now. Okay, give it all back to me. I'd probably not be in favor of that, yeah.
And she can come back in a year for review.
How about six months?
I'm fine with six months too. So I, I'm going to make it six months that she can come back to, uh, a review to get the sound permits up to the.
I would second that, Chair. This is Justin Gross.
Yep, excellent. Okay, so we've got a motion by Lynn and a second by Justin to amend the conditional use permit to certainly allow for a Class E and compliance with all the conditions therein, also a Class A sound permit limited to no more than six per month. But understand your motion correctly?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we've got a motion on the table to grant an amended conditional use permit for this location. All those in favor will take roll call, say aye or nay.
Lynn Carlson?
Aye.
Dave Gere?
Aye.
Justin Gross?
Aye.
Nathan Blake?
Aye.
Cindy Smith?
Aye.
Marla Jones?
Nay.
And Mel Pins?
Aye.
Okay, so motion carries six to one. And, um, we should have that decision and order ready by sometime early next week. Okay, that concludes our hearing on item number six. And we'll now move to our last item. And we'll now move to our last item on our agenda today, which is item seven, an amendment request for an existing conditional use permit at 821 East Euclid Avenue.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Catherine Doster, planner for the city of Des Moines. Item seven, as mentioned, is a liquor store located at 821 East Euclid Avenue. They have previously come through. We saw them in last September asking for permission to be a liquor store, which would allow up to 100% of receipts from the entirety of their square footage, so 1,537 square feet. They're located on East Euclid and Wright Street, right here at the corner. To the north is a get and go, I believe. The northeast is the auto zone. The Wendy's is next door. And then this is a small business that I can't remember the, what they do there. Just a few images for context. This is looking from the north to the property across East Euclid. Then from the south side of East Euclid, looking towards the west. Just a little bit of context down Wright Street. And zoomed in photo, just to kind of get a little bit better of the facade as it occurs right now. We did receive some drawings from the applicant showing the proposed expansion. So you can see the existing building. Let me zoom in a little bit. You can see the existing building in this more clear shade. And then a gray in shape shows the four areas of the proposed additions. And you can see that they are looking at changing the parking lot. Staff would note that any of these drawings would still need to go through the site plan process after you make any decision, if you were to make a decision of approval.
Okay.
Let me scroll down here a little bit. Some basic elevations. And then they also provided us with some rendered elevation. So you can see what they're proposing for the sides and along the, excuse me, the additions, proposed additions. And staff would just note that the main difference we're seeing here is that they are requesting an expansion of the existing building and the right to expand sales to the entirety of the proposed additions. They are still in compliance and meet the conditions of a conditional use. So staff and the separation distances. So staff is recommending approval of this request. And we have included the conditions as previously stated in September. We pretty much just copy pasted those in with the amendment of that any liquor store shall be limited to the proposed 3,674 square foot building and that it would need to be in compliance with a site plan that satisfies the provision of Chapter 135, inclusive of any type two design alternatives. And then, as you can see, these are pretty much the same conditions as previously stated. We did remove 10 just because it's a duplicate of condition one. And then here is the previous decision and order. So you can see those conditions as previously stated. We received several emails via the applicant or the appellant primarily after his notification for in place of a neighborhood meeting. I can come back to any of these if anyone has any questions. They kind of span.
I hate to interrupt. Can you go back, make this larger and go slower because I would like to read those emails?
Yep, certainly.
Thank you.
Just let me know when I can move to the next one.
Fine. Fine. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And then we also received some of our standard comment cards back in and we can just do the same thing if you would like, Lynn.
I appreciate that. I do read them. So, living in the area, I want to read all the comments. So thank you. So I read those. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And then we'll just show the consent map. We didn't have addresses on the emails, so they were unfortunately not able to be included. So we just included the comment cards because we need actual signatures with them on the map. So here's the consent map. And I can scroll back to anything that anyone would like to see or answer any questions that the board may have.
Sure, yeah, board members, any questions for Catherine? Okay, people are in thought. Catherine, I do want to ask, I'm a bit surprised here. The application talks about an expansion of the existing use. I don't see that there's an existing use here. Did the liquor store not open as was originally intended?
I would have to leave that to the appellant to confirm or deny with you. But as you can see from the site photos on the 15th, that it does not appear to be open.
Okay, okay, all right. All right. Okay, any other questions from my colleagues for Catherine? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the appellant. They have up to 10 minutes to address the board with their reasoning for their request to amend their conditional use permit request. We just need them to lead off with their name and address.
Inder Singh, 100 East Euclid Avenue, Suite 33, Des Moines, Iowa, 50313.
Okay. Good afternoon, sir. If you could just give us kind of a short summary of what you've been doing with the business and what it is you'd like to do and why.
Inder, can you? Mr. Chair, this is Eric Lundey.
Yeah.
City staff. Looks like Mr. Inder's representation is raising his hand, Lloyd Ogil.
Okay.
I don't know if that's the intention for Lloyd to do the presentation.
Well, just for a minute, let's go to Lloyd then. And we'll see if he does plan to speak for his client. We will assume he has that authorization if so.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, this Lloyd Ogil, attorney for the applicant, 301 East Des Moines, Iowa. And once the original initial use permit was approved, my client started to go through the development process. And there's been an extensive back and forth with the city and our architects on the design of the space. And the original intention was to place the mechanicals for the cooler on the outside of the building and open up more space so there'd be enough to not only have me selling liquor, but to be selling pop and food stuffs and things that you'd typically see in a convenience store. And when we were going through that process with the city, it was determined that there was code issues. We could not place those mechanicals outside of the structure. They had to be internal. And it took up so much space that it started to interfere with our ability to convert this to the type of store that we thought the community deserved and the one which we described to you when we originally went in our CUP. So at that point, we knew we were going to have to go in and admit the CUP. And we had architects, again, proceed with, if we're going to have to do that, just to proceed with doing it in a way that would really make it a first-class convenience store. For example, part of that expansion to the back is so they can enlarge the bathroom. And the other part of the expansion is to place the mechanicals. But the idea is that when you walk in here, you're not going to just walk into a liquor store, grab your bottle of booze and leave. But there's going to be groceries and food and soda and all of those things that you would expect to find in that kind of establishment. So the price of this investment has risen. Originally, I think it was about a $515,000 investment. If this is approved, we would, that number, we'd spend about $200,000 more dollars on the site. And again, we think just doing this redesign, that it's going to be a much nicer, nicer store and location than what we were able to do originally. If we cannot get the conditional use to expand it, then architects are just going to have to go back. We're going to have to put the mechanicals in there. And it's going to, we're really not going to be able to offer much away any other products other than liquor. And we really, really, you know, our commitment was to do something that was, you know, not going to be nice or and going to be able to look and feel like a convenience store, even though this is a straight liquor license. You know, we want to be able to offer a lot of additional products as well as that. So we think this is actually, in the end, going to be an even better use of the property than to go with a smaller footprint and a straight liquor store. Having said that, I don't know if Inder is still on the line. He's had some connectivity issues, which I think why he's just on the phone. But maybe give Inder a chance to add any other comments if he likes to make.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry, had a little bit of phone problems. But Inder.
Could you state your name, sir, so we can get that on the record?
Yep, Inder Singh, I-N-D-E-R, last name S-I-N-D-H.
Thank you.
Address, 100 East Euclid, Suite 33, Des Moines, Iowa, 50313. So yes, the main reason, we came in front of the board back in September to get a conditional use to open up a convenience store to what we originally wanted. But I believe that categorized the way the city of Des Moines does that it was now called 100% liquor store. As we kind of got together with our engineering at Bishop Engineering, we were drawing up plans. We just do not have room to include things, you know, that you would find at a standard convenience store, you know, like water, pop, you know, energy drinks or, you know, even ice cream or ice. So as we got together with that, if you see that there are four different things that are proposed on that site plan that we have submitted, they are not all for retail. Few of those are for obviously the mechanical and the bathroom that we're requesting addition to. And also coolers. The building already on the west side has a cooler. That's already part of the existing building. We're just wanting to expand it. The main thing is we do want to have this as a convenience store that, you know, families can walk into and grab soda and snacks and not necessarily always have to, you know, get liquor or some sort of alcoholic beverage. So these are the kind of things we're requesting. As we came in front of you guys in September of last year, there were some terms we agreed on. Even though liquor stores open until two, we agreed to have reduced hours. And there was, you know, no advertisement we were going to do. And we're still sticking to that. So if you drive by, there's going to be no indication of that, you know, we do sell liquor. And also, we're completely redoing the building from the inside and out. I mean, that's new electrical, new plumbing, new mechanical. So everything is new. We're investing heavily into the existing lot. Building is worn down and it's been vacant for over a year plus. We did get the conditional use permit. We just did not want to open up a standard liquor store. We want to give more variety to the community. I'm happy to answer any question that you guys might have, but that's all I had.
All right, questions from the board members for Mr. Singh?
Lynn Carlson here, and I seem to be the talkative one today. With it being a liquor store, it's smaller. It was easier to control the people going to hang out with expanding your merchandise, you know, candy, popcorn, ice cream, things kids are going to want. What measures do you have in place to ensure that not going to have theft of liquor or people buying liquor who don't need to be buying it?
Hi, if I could answer, I think, this is Lloyd Ogil. I think, I believe there are restrictions in the CUP and potentially just in the code in general, that all the liquor's got to be behind a counter and a locked cabinet. It's not going to be available. At least the hard liquor is not going to be available to the public without the assistance of a clerk.
And in a sense, for to get this expansion, even if we do put, the liquor has to have, be in a cabinet, locked cabinet or have any of those security caps that are now required. So those were a few of those terms that we put in the last, the last CUP in September.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions for the applicant or his attorney?
I know, this is Cindy, Mr. Chair, Cindy Smith. I know, I heard mention of hours, but can you specify what the hours are? In which days of the week? Are they all the same or different on weekends?
They will be all the same from 8:00 AM to closing at 11:00 PM. So main concern was, I know, you know, liquor stores can be open until two. We're, yes, we're going to be selling alcohol, but that is not our main focus. We want to give opportunity for, have all sorts of things, which a standard convenience store will have.
Okay. Mr. Singh, both you and Mr. Ogil have mentioned repeatedly how, well, yeah, this is a liquor store, but really, it's a convenience store. We're going to have groceries and other good stuff. Does any of your application materials show your kind of merchandising layout? As in, how many aisles or square footage of space you would have devoted to liquor versus other items? Was that part of?
And, and yes, yeah, that was one of the main reasons we requested this addition. When we went to, you know, three main vendors, the Pepsi, Coca-Cola, and seven Dr. Pepper companies, they all require us to either have, give them a one door or two doors, but they won't let us just put simple coolers inside of the building as is. I guess just a marketing, how they do it. So yes, we have went to them because they make you sign a certain amount of years of contracts saying, hey, you know, if we walk into a store, Pepsi's going to have two doors. Coca-Cola's going to have three doors. Monster wants their own. Red Bull wants their own. So, yes, that was one of the main reasons we are requesting this, I guess, an extra cooler.
Sure. Well, I see staff poking around here to try to find an image, but I don't know if we have one that shows that. Do you have an idea of how many square feet you would actually be devoting to the liquor sales itself?
So, the, so this is, it would be, the, the inside of it would be, I don't, the floor plan, I believe it is I think five, I think four by six is for liquor. And, and the cooler that's existing there has six doors, and that would be your beer doors. And then the seven-door new cooler we're proposing would be your pops. So, that would be evenly divided amongst Pepsi and Coca-Cola, seven up, and the energy drinks.
What, what I'm kind of interested in is if you're telling me you're going to limit your alcohol sales to, let's say, I don't know, less than 500 square feet. I'm not telling you what to say here, but I'd like to know what, what, what amount of your floor space you're planning to devote to selling alcohol.
Okay. I think on that one, we, we would have to, as we get forward with the layout, we can request a layout from Bishop Engineering and sure, but yes, it would be, so it would be, the six doors would be beers, and the four to five aisles would be for your liquor.
Okay, if I was to simplify this for you, because we're here to make a decision today. We, yeah, unless you want to continue this to the next month for some reason. What, what I'd be interested in is, of our drawing here, we have a proposed addition east-west in the existing building. We would limit our alcohol sales to this area or that area. That, that could maybe help our conversation, so we understand.
So, yes, so the, so it would, the, the beer would be and the addition at the 700 square foot.
So, on the, on the west end, your beer would be there?
Yep.
Okay.
And then the inside, the inside would be the liquor.
Okay, so that's 1,500 plus square feet. So, that's over, that's probably about 60% of your overall square footage here now.
And then the rest would be the pop.
Over on the east side? Okay.
Yep.
All right. And then are you planning to sell groceries of any type, snack goods, or?
And yes, that was, yep, that was my next thing is, I know in the 1,500 square foot that I've said would be the liquor, there would be, I would say about 100 to 200 square feet would be for your groceries, meaning your simple snacks.
Okay. All right. So, if I was guessing here, I'd say it looks like you want to devote somewhere around 2,000 square feet to the sales of alcoholic beverages of all types.
Yes.
Yeah. All right. One other question for you here. When this operated as Valero as a gas station, the delivery drivers had a habit of parking on Wright Street, which is, it's, it's kind of a cut through. I use it a lot, but it's a residential street. And that resulted in a lot of traffic congestion there. You know, we had a driver with a two-wheeler in the middle of the street coming around. With this expansion, it doesn't look like you'll have any more paved area than was there before. You'll probably have less. So, how are you proposing to handle deliveries in a safe manner?
I think on, as, as I believe now, as existing site has three entrances on those, I believe they would now be coming in from Euclid and turning into, correct me if I'm wrong, I just, with my directions, I believe on the west side, that this is coming from Second Avenue to, into, and turning into the lot.
Yeah, so you've got to drive on the Euclid side, on the northwest corner of your lot that goes out to Euclid. So, you're saying that they would turn in there?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, all right, seeing none. I thank you both for your presentation. And we'll move on to the next part of the hearing, and we'll see who may be present here today by Zoom or by phone that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request. There's anybody that would like to support the expansion of this conditional use permit request to allow this addition? You've got a chance to give your comments here up to five minutes. You just need to hit star nine on your phone to ask to be recognized. Or, in the lower right-hand of your screen, hit the raise hand icon on Zoom. Anybody here to speak in support of the request? I'll do going once, going twice. All right, we'll have staff monitor that, just in case somebody wants to. Okay, is there anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to granting the request to expand the conditional use permit here? Same thing, ask for permission, star nine on your phone, or raise hand icon on Zoom. Anybody can jump in. Anybody to speak in opposition? All right, anybody that wants us to speak in general, position or not, that's what we call a neutral request, same sign. Okay. Um, I think what we'll do is we'll just then go ahead and move to questions for staff, which may include the CEO there. Board members, any questions for city staff? Jump on in. Okay. Um, I've got a general question. I don't want to make this difficult for anyone. But if we were to grant approval of this, I was kind of interested in what areas of the building would be used for alcohol sales. I know sometimes we talk direct square footage where shelving or coolers are present. But if we wanted to say, you know, areas of the building, the west side, the central side, so no more than 2,000 square foot in, in aggregate, including shelving and lock areas. Is, is that too broad? Is that too difficult to enforce? Suzanne or staff, anybody want to jump on that?
Chair members of the board, this is Suzanne Donovan. If you put it specific enough, like, we could, we can go in and, and look at it every time the liquor license comes up, but we have to know pretty specifically how many square footage or how many shelving units or something that's pretty, pretty simple to monitor.
Okay. And they're obviously, you know, if we said it's got to be within 2,000 square foot area of the building, and then they just jam it full of beer. Well, according to fire code and widths of aisles, there are limitations to have a certain amount of open space within those areas anyway, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And is there any ban on commercial unloading of deliveries or supplies for, for commercial businesses on city streets?
No.
Okay, all right, as long as they're not in a no parking district, we don't really regulate that.
Right, they, they can use city streets to reach and unload and then leave by the most direct route back to a truck route.
Got it, okay. All right, thank you very much. Anybody else got anything else? Okay, all right, seeing none. We can let the applicant, Mr. Singh and/or Lloyd, you guys can work together here. You've got up to three minutes for any closing comments you might have.
Nope.
That's okay. Okay.
This is Lloyd.
Yeah, Lloyd.
We, talking about some type of confidence that we're going to limit our square footage. If, if this repulsed, if you want to add a language that states that square footage for beer, wine, and liquor can be more, no more than 2,000 square feet, we would be fine with that.
Okay, good to know. All right. Okay, we'll go ahead then and close the public portion and go to board deliberation. All right, general thoughts, observations, or directions my colleagues might have here?
This is Lynn Carlson. I live in the Highland Park area, so I'm very close to this. And I know we were following this before, and I do like the clean looks of the improved structure. And I think that's going to maybe attract the type of people that we want to have in this area. So, I'm very fine with this because I remember correctly, last time, this applicant was before the board. It came up that he's owned several other properties in the Des Moines metro area and has a very good reputation. Um, and, you know, we had the other laws in that, so I'd be in favor of allowing this amendment to the conditional use to proceed.
All right. Okay, any other comments?
If there's no other comments, I will make the motion that we allow this amended conditional use to proceed with the provisions that the liquor here not cover more than 2,000 square feet of the interior, and everything else go through as stated before, with the hours of operation from 8:00 to 11:00.
Right.
And no outlets on the outside, all those other things we had mentioned before, that trying to prevent people from hanging around just outside.
Yep. And, and Lynn, just a comment I'd have, if you want to limit to 2,000 square feet, that, that would be based on the applicant constructing the overall area of square footage as presented on the site plan. So, in other words, if they cut the building in half, oh, great, I get to do 2,000 square feet, not take up the whole building. So, so no more than 2,000 feet, so long as, as the building is built with the general square footage shown.
Was it 3,500 or?
Yeah, yeah, as generally presented, it's fine with me.
Yeah, or same percentage of.
Okay, does somebody want to make a second on Lynn's motion?
Mr. Chair, this is Cindy. I'll second Cindy Smith.
Okay, so we got a motion by Lynn, second by Cindy, to grant the conditional use amendment request with the addition that any area of alcohol sales shall be limited to know that more than 2,000 square feet of the building footprint in proportion to what has been presented on the, on the site plan. All those in favor will take roll call, say aye or nay.
Dave Gere?
Aye.
Justin Gross?
Aye.
Nathan Blake?
Aye.
Cindy Smith?
Aye.
Marla Jones?
Aye.
Lynn Carlson?
Aye.
And Mel Penn?
Aye. Okay, motion carries unanimously, Mr. Singh. So, we look forward to your investment in, in that neighborhood. We'd like to see that property get used, get cleaned up, and be a good asset for all. So, I wish you well. That takes care of, I believe, our formal agenda items. Those from Board of Adjustment who were present last month, which I think was all of us. If you have reviewed the minutes, if anybody has any changes or wants to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented, please make a motion as such.
This is Marla. So, I will move to approve those as is.
Is there a second?
This is Cindy. I'll second it.
Okay, all right, motion by Marla, second by Cindy to approve minutes. All in favor, raise your, or make, we'll, we'll do roll call here, aye or nay?
Nathan Blake?
Aye.
Cindy Smith?
Aye.
Marla Jones?
Aye.
Lynn Carlson?
Aye.
Dave Gere?
Aye.
Justin Gross?
Aye.
Mel Penn?
Aye. Okay, motion carries, all right. Well, I want to thank my colleagues and city staff. We do a lot better job than Kelly and Ryan or Colbert or Jimmy Fallon, who's doing all this stuff by Zoom and, and remotely. So, I appreciate everybody's time and patience this afternoon. Thank you very much, and this hearing is adjourned.
Bye, everybody. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, staff. Thank you, board.
Hey, I got a quick question maybe still there. Are we having Zoom next month since city offices are closed to July 1st or?
Yes, the June 24th meeting will definitely be on Zoom. I, we're not sure about July yet, but planned on the same format for June.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
You bet. Have a good night.